We're going to call the meeting to order. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to move on to the Golden Apples. Dr. Lanz.
Thank you very much. I'm going to turn this over to Mrs. Omer. And just as everyone may, let me start over again. I'll turn it over to Mrs. Omer. Our Golden Apple awardees are not able to make it tonight, but they will be honored and recognized not only today, but also tomorrow when we all come back to work.
So it's my fault that they're not here because I kind of gave them a pass with the snow/ice day today. So I didn't want it to feel, not that it's not great to come to a board meeting, but perhaps they may have felt like it would have been more punishment that they had the day off than they had to come in this evening. So it's my fault. So, and actually Patty Harthen, who is the Director of the Student Services, is the one that nominated both Tammy and Karen. So tonight's Golden Apple recipients are Karen Taboulian and Tammy Hunter, who are both Student Service Secretaries. They were nominated by Patty, and they are typically the first people that our parents or guardians come into contact with as they enroll their students. So they have a big job in making sure that our parents feel welcomed and also that we get all of the documentation that they need. So beyond that, they also provide Google Translate for our students that are in need of that. Obviously, we do have some students that are ELD. Karen and Tammy consistently come in early, stay late, and work weekends to make sure students are enrolled efficiently and accurately. In fact, I'm sure that they were working from home today even though it was a day off for their particular bargaining unit. They work tirelessly to get as many kids into the classroom by the first day of school, knowing this is important to incoming students who are new to the district. Karen and Tammy assist Building Secretaries daily to help make their jobs easier and answer their questions and concerns. They are always available to train staff on either new procedures or ones of which they are not aware. And again, student counting changes every year. There's always some similar kind of nuances that they always have to learn as we have new experiences and new situations that arise in student accounting. They're forward-thinking and try to find ways to make all of our jobs more efficient by creating new forms and procedures and updating forms so parents have a better understanding of what is needed from them. On top of their enrollment and registration responsibilities, Karen and Tammy also play a huge role in supporting our McKinney-Vento students, including making sure they have everything they need to be successful in school, even securing rides to and from school. In fact, I woke Tammy up this morning at 4:30 so that she could cancel some of those rides. So I got to wish her a good morning and say perhaps you might want to go back to sleep after you do that. So their efforts to provide students with heavy-duty backpacks, winter clothes, shoes, and school supplies play a critical role in helping these students feel that despite their home-life challenges, they do not feel different or less than their classmates. We'd like to thank Tammy and Karen, even though they're not here, for being true team players, as well as Patty, their leader in that department, and with a heart for Wald Lake students. It is our honor to honor them in absence.
Congratulations to them both. We're going to move on to our textbook recommendation. Dr. Lanz.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Krasinski.
Thank you, Dr. Lanz. So the textbook recommendation this evening is for World Language. As you know, World Language touches all of our students, grades six through 12 in a variety of ways in our three main World Language, the languages that are taught here in the district. So that covers Spanish, French, and German. So in summary, the current World Language materials are a curated list of resources that teachers have collected and organized over the years. No single textbook exists across our World Language classes right now. The various materials that folks have been using are not aligned with current best practice or proficiency-based methods in World Language instruction, and they're not necessarily aligning with our AP and IB classes in order to prepare students for taking those tests. This has resulted in a lack of consistency across World Language. And based on the results of the examination of all available products and an extensive pilot of two of our resources over the course of this fall, it is the committee's recommendation, the World Language Team, that we should adopt entre cultures for Spanish and entre cultures for French, and then intercultural for German. All of these are by Wayside Publishing, 2024. These include textbooks, student workbooks, digital resources, a host of training opportunities and ongoing training for our teachers, as well as online support. The cost here, which includes a six-year digital license for the teachers and for the students, will be at the total of $468,553.05. This process has been endorsed by administration, and a motion for approval of this textbook adoption will be presented to the Board at the March 6, 2025, meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to public commentary. I just want to say thank you all for coming tonight. And our weather conditions, they seem to be improving, but could be a little hazardous, so just be careful on your way home. And thank you for being here and for your interest in addressing us as the Board. This is your opportunity to address the Board. The Board's going to listen to your statements, questions, and concerns, but we're not going to have a conversation. If follow-up is necessary, a member of the superintendent's staff or a Board member will get back with you. You have three minutes to address the Board. Please keep an eye on the timer on the wall, just over there. If you come close to the time, Mr. Segler will let you know that you're coming close for you to begin to wrap up your comments. We ask that all speakers remain professional and refrain from any personal attacks. Thank you. And with that, we're going to start with Mr. Larry Gray.
Good evening. My name's Larry Gray. I'm supervisor for Commerce Township. This works about as good as ours does, I see. I'm just here tonight. I don't, agenda number nine, you're going to be talking about the School Resource Officer Contract that we have with the Oakland County Sheriff's Office and between us and, between you and Commerce Township. For those of you who paid attention to what the increased costs were, we were hit with a 15% increase from the Oakland County Sheriff's Office and Oakland County Board of Commissioners this year, which increased our total cost of $935,000. And the next couple of years' cost is going to be CPI plus 6%, which is basically a 9% increase. So I'm here tonight if you guys have any questions. The School of Resource Officers that we have, we have three. We continue, we're going to continue to have the services that we provide for you through Oakland County Sheriff's Office. And again, I'm just here when your mind comes up, if you guys have any questions, I'll be more happy to help out. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Ron Lippett.
Ron Lippett, Commerce Township. My wife Denise and I have three daughters, including our youngest, who is a junior at Wald Lake Northern. I was hoping to draw the public's and Board's attention to President Trump's January 29th Executive Order entitled "Ending Radical Indoctrination in K-12 Schooling." You can find the order in its entirety on whitehouse.gov, but with your permission, I want to draw your attention to three specific targets of the order, which should concern Wald Lake schools. The first is a threat to our federal funding should we quote, should we teach quote discriminatory equity ideology, unquote. That is a nebulous term, but you'll have to research it. Put simply, the concept suggests schools incorrectly support groups of people rather than individuals, groups such as LGBTQ students or those of minority status. How our compliance to this order will be measured, that is unclear, but what is clear is 11% of our 2526 budget comes from federal sources, roughly $18 million. Second is the order's resurrection of the 1776 Commission, which is an advisory committee designed to promote patriotic education in the classroom. While there is certainly nothing objectionable to patriotic content, the Commission does create restrictions to content which it deems detrimental to the American narrative. Subjects like slavery or Native American history will be specifically targeted. Wald Lake teachers will need to carefully navigate these changes if our schools are to remain compliant under the order. Lastly, the executive order mandates Wald Lake schools observe Constitution Day, celebrating our founding documents, and requiring constitutional education for all students regardless of their curriculum. Public schools risk losing their federal funding should constitutional education not be properly implemented. Again, how this is measured, that remains to be seen. I have no doubt we will be prepared for all these changes, and if need be, we have access to great attorneys to help guide us. But should we be concerned, should we be concerned that some Board members might see, prefer seeing our federal funds directed to charter schools with minimum state oversight? I'm not sure. I certainly hope not. Time will certainly tell. Challenging times for our public education ahead. Please know, as a Board, you have our support from the community. So in advance, thank you very much. On a final note, tonight through Sunday is Wald Lake Northern's production of Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat. Tickets are still available, so if you're the type who looks good in red and yellow and green and brown and scarlet and black and ochre and peach, this might be the show for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sarah Hawkins.
Hi, I'm Sarah Hawkins. Last month, I spoke and the community was interrupting me, so I please just ask that none of that happens tonight. Thank you. Regarding the questionable books, nationwide, the legal age is 16 to 18 years old. Authors whom choose to make a character 16 and the other an adult, and mention in the book that this is a legal relationship, even though nationwide, 16 is not the age of consent everywhere. In my opinion, this implies that authors would want readers to know that 16-year-olds can have sex with adults. Separately, there's a new generation of parents, and we don't need teachers to be our kids' allies. We understand being gay is a sexual preference, not a mental health concern. We can be our kids' allies. Teachers don't need to educate on how sex should be conducted past biology. It's unnecessary and quite frankly weird. I have many gay friends, and actually, they agree with me. When an authority figure assigns or reads sexual content without telling the children their rights to opt out, disrespecting their religious freedom, as we know, many religions correlate with marriage. Then children feeling forced to comply with the authority, trapped even triggered, then telling their parents they did not consent to this, this is sexual harassment by definition. Allegedly, the same teacher that wrote and read this book has said things on social media such as, gay Republicans should be taken outside and beaten with cement blocks. This hate speech towards the gay community should not be tolerated. This is the scary comic. Does he want to beat 18-year-old Republican gay voters that are in his school? This teacher also did not inform children of their rights before reading sexual content. This book had content in it such as, he had a dozen girls lined up ready to blow him. This is objectifying women, reducing the value of women. Is the district aware? What is your plan to protect the children? For the record, I'm not claiming any teacher should be financially harmed, although if it was my responsibility, I would fire him, but this isn't. I'm just a concerned parent. I'm glad to be here again tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Van Lewen.
Good evening. I'm here speaking as a retired Board Member and also as a retired leader of the union, the WLEA. We recently, in the past week, had a Board Member under their name identified as a Board Member, published some data on the district's reading proficiency and math proficiency with statements like, "The administration must do better," and "Holding administration accountable for results like this must be done." And I find that that is an inappropriate avenue for a Board Member to be communicating with administration. The Board hires our superintendent. Our superintendent hires with approval of the Board. Our cabinet, and these people are professionals who are dedicated to handling issues such as math proficiency and literacy proficiency. And I don't think it's up to an individual Board Member to place on social media condemnation of our administration for their actions relative to our reading and math scores. So I would hope that in the future, if there are such posts that are necessary, that they be done under private, personal accounts rather than identified accounts as a school Board Member. Thank you.
Thank you. Gabby Tiaga.
Hello. My name is Gabby Tiaga, and thank you for letting me speak tonight. I attended the last meeting and had the opportunity to speak and listen to public comments. I want to highlight a few concerns for everyone. The first gentleman who spoke chastised this community on their response to a Wald Lake Northern teacher reading an inappropriate book to students. He stated that teachers are private citizens and that it is harmful to spread misinformation, and we all might get sued. The second gentleman got up and went on a Nazi-filled defamation rant. He called Moms for Liberty, a right-wing extremist hate group, quote, "Nazis started with book burning and banning, which led to burning people." When he finished his rant, the Board of Education thanked him for his comments, and the community applauded him. I am a Moms for Liberty and Wald Lake Citizens for Parental Rights member. Am I a Nazi? Is half this district full of Nazis? Are members of this Board Nazis? I dare you to say it to my face. No more hiding in the shadows of your keyboards and generalizations. You believe it, you say it, you need to own it. Now, on to the statements from the women who spoke. I am done with the narrative and fear-mongering of the left. When you make a statement, I quote, "It is unbearable for many kids, and I am so sad to say some of them didn't make it, that it is dangerous and shameful rhetoric to imply without this teacher, our children will die, that he is the only safe person in their life, and I quote, 'could be saving lives.' If he genuinely felt that way, as a mandated reporter, he should be filing his concerns with his boss and the police. Why is he not speaking out if their homes are that dangerous?" This woman spoke of having children in our district, that her children were afraid of being in our schools because, I quote, "the Nazi crap that happened to them," again with the word and implications that this school district supports and condones Nazis. The phenomenon called "social transitioning" is, "Hi, I'm a trusted adult. Here are some secrets we're going to keep from your parents together, and they have to do with your body and sexuality. I struggle to find a better word for that than grooming. That teacher runs a club at Northern called Gay Straight Alliance. His webpage states, 'We don't keep a formal list, and members who want to stay private may do so.'" How is that not keeping secrets from parents with the encouragement of a trusted adult? Let's make this clear. Parents speaking out against this teacher are based on his inappropriate conduct with students, not because he's gay. When the fear-mongering Nazi ranting leftist adults finish their statements, this Board of Education thanked them for their comments, and this community clapped for them. When it came to board commentary, not one of you chastised them for their Nazi or fear-mongering rhetoric. Your silence was deafening, and the community applause was telling. If someone on the right, who has the common sense that God gave them, questions the appropriateness of a book read to children by a teacher on the subject of a college student having sex with a high school student, and the character is keeping it a secret, I am called a Nazi. The Board of Education thanks them, and this community applauds them. To quote my 16-year-old, "Do these people even know what a Nazi is? Shame on you for taking a word that meant so much and reducing it to something so little, to treat it like it's confetti that you toss in your parades." Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Paul.
2025, a new year. And I want to be on record, again requesting a trained, competent, armed security guard like the officer you have here tonight for yourselves in every Wald Lake school. I will continue to make this request for as long as it takes, because in the last nine years that I and countless others have been asking, the majority of the Board refuses to move on this important, proven common sense action to prioritize the physical safety and well-being of our children, teachers, and staff. If the majority of this Board decides this year not to hire a competent in-house security guard for each school, I would request to see an accounting of how this year's $1.4 million taxpayer-funded Safety and Security Grant is spent. Grant money for hiring is a practice of the WLCSD. No more excuses. It's a new Board configuration. It's a new year, and it's high time to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy Freed.
Hi, my name is Randy Freed, and I am the mother of three children that have gone through the Wald Lake District, one Wald Lake Central grad in 2024, a Wald Lake Central junior, and a Keith fifth grader. I'm here tonight just to congratulate the Keith teachers, staff, and PTA. I'm putting together another fabulous talent show. It has been one of my favorite events at Keith since my fifth grader was in kindergarten, and it's just a great night where the school community comes together and cheers each other on and celebrates each other's diverse skills and supports each other. It's more of what we need in these divided times, people coming together to lift each other up, to clap when our friends succeed or simply try, and to let people know we believe in them with all their skills, diverse talents, and diversity.
Thank you. I think it says Connor Bond, but it's rather light.
Good evening. My name is Connor Bond. I'm a lifelong resident of Commerce Township and a proud alum of Wald Lake Northern Class of 2020. I've been reflecting a lot on my time in the Wald Lake schools since I graduated college a few months, about a year ago. I work in the Special Collections Library world. I learned to engage with and communicate the complicated parts of our shared tangible cultural history. I learned these skills during my time in Wald Lake schools. I learned to engage with the world around me, to understand its nuts and bolts, and to learn how to express myself, how to communicate and collaborate with others. And these were essential skills. I remember specifically many of the lessons in high school, which I'm going to proceed with the phrase, well, I think it's from Shakespeare, "What's Past is Prologue." I remember during my time in high school, making friends, learning to speak publicly, learning to understand how our country and our world have come together while experiencing great fear, the fear that the histories and things we were reading could be stripped down, stripped away, and removed of their substance. Concern, as I tried to understand the history that brought us here collectively together, while still having large gaps in my education, I particularly remember one world history teacher having us teach ourselves the 20th century. He took the last month of class off, and I've been playing catch-up ever since. But I remember amidst all of this, the best thing I learned in high school was in AP Environmental Science. We were told that biodiversity is the key to survival in any good ecosystem. It's everyone coming together, supporting each other across species, across place. That's how a good community works. And like then, I am now afraid for students, for staff, for everyone with President Donald Trump's recent flurry of executive orders targeting diversity practices of any sort, targeting trans athletes in schools. There have been more laws passed in states banning trans athletes than there are athletes, trans athletes competing in schools in our country. I'm afraid of monsters being made out of molehills, people being targeted into silence once again, and self-censorship taking control. So what I urge you is to remember who we're doing this for. We're doing this for our community and for our students. Have compassion for them, support them. Teach them about the world that they're going into, because I'm lucky enough to have been able to expand my education beyond your walls. Many people won't have that opportunity. And if you censor their world for them, if you strip it down, and if you give into the queer-phobic claptrap that you're sure to hear more of in the near future, well, you'll just be failing them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kathy Kubik.
Hello. I've come here, I've been here before. I gave it up after the election. I thought, there's nothing we can do. Wald Lake schools, I worked for them. I came here in 87, and they were great schools, really good schools. We were high up in the ratings. We are no longer high up in the ratings. We are under 50th in the niche results. I can't believe it, that they've gone down that far. We owe over half a billion dollars for those beautiful schools, state-of-the-art buildings. What has happened? Is it wokeism? Common core math hasn't helped. You take, you took curse about creative, now we have, then we had creative spelling. We lost the election because the MEA had it, they won it before we went to the nineties of early voting. We had lost it because of absentee voting, because MEA can really push hard. We're not strong enough, I guess, the people. I come here just to say, what happened? When are you going to go back to teaching math, reading, science? You don't. And then you have a Board Member that's been on for 30 years. I would, if I were this person, I would have left because of embarrassment that we're now under 50th. You have a person in the, I know I worked in the schools as a para educator, because someone, a previous Board Member pointed that out, that she was a para, not a teacher. They did that at the voting. So I just want to say, when are we going to wake up for the kids? When are you going to help the school become number one? I mean, Novi, right down the street, is number one. They have one school, one high school. They don't have three. We have three. Oh, I wonder how many students they have. Maybe it's a lot less. Something's got to be done, and it's not wokeism. Thank you for letting me speak, and I don't know that I can come anymore, because you don't change. The new Board Members, wake up. Change it. Make it better.
Thank you. Kristy Russ.
Okay, here I am again. I didn't prepare a lot tonight because I feel like I've said it all for years about our literacy. The National Report Card has come out about how poor our education system is in America. We just have had people speaking about Michigan in general and where we stand. And I get, you can nitpick how they put their reports together, but the bottom line is, we're not doing well. You know that. Many of you have seen emails from me for years. You've seen me talk up here for years about our literacy in the district. Add math to it. Look at our scores. It's not okay to continue to do the same thing over and over and not getting those results. I've said it before also, that you don't have teachers that are in the district coming up here and speaking about the curriculum because they know that it'll have detrimental effects in their career if they come and speak. Trust me, I know that. I was looking out for kids, and I left one district because I spoke up too much. And instead of promoting me and putting in a position where I can really make those changes, they didn't want anything to do with it because those higher-ups didn't want to be told they were doing anything wrong, really. And all they were doing was... And all they were doing was hurting kids. So, like Kathy said, Novi, number one in the state, however they do the rankings, whatever, people look at that. They're right next door to us. Northville, I think, was number two. Rochester's up there, Birmingham is up there. A lot of Oakland County schools are in the top 50. Why are we not in the top 50? What changes are you going to make so that we can move up in the rankings? It needs to be done. On a positive note, I've sat up here, because of my wonderful new job that I have where I am teaching, it's amazing, the phonics that I teach these kids and the books that I put in their hands go right along with the lessons I'm teaching them, and they can stretch out those words, and they don't have to guess or do anything, because I've taught them all the skills they need to read the stories that we're reading. So I only do that a couple days a week, and so I've been subbing, and again, always last to go are the Wald Lake jobs because of the pay, which I don't do it for the pay. I get bored at home. So, I again ask you to look at the pay, because there's jobs that sit up there that go unfilled. But the secretaries that I have at the schools I've been to have been fabulous. They're, it's a great face to walk into, and they're so happy to see you, and I love that. And then also, thank you for waiting until this morning to call schools, because even at midnight, there is nothing happening, and I know, because I was walking home. So I like that we waited, and it was the right decision to make, but thank you for waiting and not doing the, pulling the trigger too soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Wise.
Mike Wise, 24-year resident of Commerce Township. There are no laws on the books that allow the State Attorney General to prosecute a teacher for radical indoctrination, whatever that is. The State Attorney General Dana Nessel has been deeply involved in what is going on with some of these recent presidential executive orders. There's been a lot of confusion about the executive orders published by the White House. It's hard to know what they mean and what their impact is. There is this one order about ending radical indoctrination in K-12 schooling. There are a lot of people out there with many questions, students, teachers, parents. Here is an excerpt from this executive order. "The Attorney General shall coordinate with the local state attorneys and local district attorneys in their efforts to enforce the law and file appropriate actions against K-12 teachers and school officials who violate the law." Okay, so what does this mean? Let's be clear. The Attorney General will only enforce the laws that are actually on the books. Now, how did those laws get there? How about a basic refresher? If it's a federal law, it takes an act of Congress, and Congress has to pass a law in both chambers, the House and the Senate. Then it goes to the president, and the president signs it. Then you have a law. If it's state law, both chambers of the state legislature must approve it, and then the governor must sign off on it, and it becomes a law. That's how we create criminal statutes, and it is those criminal statutes that the State Attorney General and the Assistant Attorneys General prosecute, and then the county prosecutors enforce the statutes. There are no laws on the books that allow prosecution for radical indoctrination, again, whatever that is. So teachers shouldn't be looking over their shoulders for the police to go storming into their classrooms, to be coming into their schools for teaching in accordance with whatever the curriculum is in that particular school district. The State Attorney General's office has respect for the teachers. They support teachers. They want teachers to continue doing their jobs, serving kids and families all across the state of Michigan, and making sure that our children have a brighter future. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Renard.
I had a chance to be a part of the consultant's interviewing select experience a couple of weeks ago, and I want to say, I was pretty impressed with the fact that he did come in town for a whole week and gave it a good shot to try and get to as many constituents as possible. I'm looking forward to his update and how the board responds to that. In line of that, right afterwards, we started seeing in the news how academically we are failing as a district. So that's public, and I guess I want to encourage people to follow the leadership of one of the board members that may have expressed her concern over being a part of this community that is either apathetically sitting by and letting it continue, or encouraging people to get involved and do something else. So, some of you know, I graduated from this community, my husband graduated from this community, and my daughter graduated from this community. We're invested, and it was never like this. This was the community where you wanted to go, because it did develop kids in communities that were educated. You know, if we look back at the foundation of education and our founders, and when they came over here, they implemented education as a number-one priority, understanding, and at one point, I forget which founding father it was, that quoted, "We were the most educated society on the planet." I'm not sure how he knew that exactly, that may meant an overstretch, but it was a top priority. This has clearly not become a priority. We have an awful lot of money. I personally, and I'm sure this must be true for others, I don't go around asking people what their property tax percentage is, is between 50 and 59% for schools. I got nobody in here anymore, but I care about the community, and I understand it's a privilege and a civic responsibility to make sure that our next generation is properly educated. You are the responsible group. And I have no problem with somebody taking a step of leadership and saying, hey, if you missed it on the news, these are the facts. These are the facts, and we all need to be aware of them. So, thank you for whoever did that. I don't follow everybody's pages. In fact, I can't even research the district's communication page to find out what's going on. I am dropped off all the communication. There's no place on your website that says, "Sign up to get our emails or our newsletters." I don't know how you get newsletters. You know how I got invited to go to that, that interview with that guy? It was in my mailbox, and there was this card on the floor. It wasn't addressed to me, but I was like, seems like it's something I should do. So that's how I signed up for it. I would like to be on your newsletters. I would like to be more informed about what's going on in the schools, not just the plays, although that's really good. Socialization is awesome. Your main priority is academics. Let's not get that confused with anything else.
Thank you. Kelly Schrube. And Kelly, I appreciate you writing out your name.
Thank you, everyone. I'm not very good at this. I have many concerns. It's been a tumultuous couple of weeks, trying to think about what perspective is for what's appropriate to speak here versus what's appropriate for other things like calling our senators. I come from a family that always supported love and connection and community, not knowing if someone was Democratic, Republican, or other. And yet, in my old school, grandmother was always welcoming towards LGBTQ. You know, she loved Liberace, but she knew he wasn't winking at her. You know, I just want to say, I have a lot of fear for the LGBTQ community, our children, the acceptance. It's not just like, oh, do we have this program? Do we have not? But these are people, these are individuals, and they are at risk. And when we put one group at risk, what's the, what's the saying? First they came for XYZ. Or the leopard-eating-face party, right? And I didn't know the leopard would eat my face, right? All of this. There are reasons, there are jokes, there are metaphors, because when it happens to one, it happens to all of us. We're a community, and we are connected by love. I love that we have Black History Month, still recognized by our district. So many things to say. I think that has also been addressed, as we're talking about executive orders and the hate, and whether it's legal or not legal, and bringing people together, putting them apart. Everyone has their own thoughts. But I also, separate of that, I'm a special educational educator with a child with needs at home, who has now evolved and become amazing, and I've talked about my pride for her before. Both my kids are pretty awesome. Go Band as well. But I have a concern as an OT in another district, the concerns from one of my friends, who couldn't come tonight because she works 10-hour days, and she asked if I would speak for her. She has a child within the district at elementary Oakley Park who has OT services, and I was going to offer to service him, because for, since mid-November until the end of January, that he did not have an OT. A lot of people are saying here, what's an OT, right? But we know what we do, OTs, and people who receive services know what it means. We help with independence and the ability to participate at their best level in a school. When you are declined services that you have by your rights until the Department of Education gets chopped, and we don't have that anymore, which is, people can laugh, but you have to see what kids can do when they're given supports that are appropriate to their individual needs. This child happens to have language skills, and was able to tell his mom, hey, I don't see my OT anymore. No notice from the district. And she is a person who also works with students, works with children, and this is her own baby, and she's working hard, long hours, to take care of other people's children's needs.
Please finish your comments.
She was concerned that there was no notification, that the resource room teacher may be out because of other personal needs. There needs to be communication when your IEP services are not being met, what kind of substitutes, what kind of alternatives. And I know we struggle as people who bring this service to children, and I'm just relaying that as another thing, because I fear when I can't meet the needs of my students, much less when my own children or my friends' children can't get their needs met. Two different things, but it all comes together, and
Thank you.
Each child deserves what they deserve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Sawmiller.
Good evening, Tim Sawmiller, Commerce Township. I'm a cisgender male using pronouns he, him, and his. The following comes from the National Education Association. "Since 2011, the Department of Homeland Security has listed schools as sensitive locations where immigration and Customs Enforcement arrests, interviews, or searches should not take place absent unusual circumstances. Given the uncertainty about whether schools might be targeted, it is important to put protections in place at the local level that limit immigration enforcement at schools. Countless school districts around the country have already passed Safe Zones resolutions to do so. Wald Lake schools have not yet adopted a Safe Zone resolution. Until that happens, the following information describes what educators should do. If immigration officers attempt to enter a school's campus, educators should direct those agents to the school district superintendent. The superintendent should request to see written legal authorization and verify the identity of the agents. It is important for the superintendent to review with legal counsel what the immigration officer provides as such legal authorization. There is a distinction between an ICE administrative warrant and a traditional federal court warrant. School districts may respond differently depending on the type of warrant. An ICE administrative warrant authorizes an immigration officer to arrest a person suspected of violating immigration laws. It is, however, not a warrant within the meaning of the Fourth Amendment of the Constitution, because an ICE warrant is not supported by a showing of probable cause of a criminal offense and is not issued by a court judge or magistrate. An ICE warrant does not grant an immigration officer any special power to compel school officials to cooperate, and is not a court order that would, under the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, allow a school to disclose educational records without parent or guardian consent. A federal or state court warrant is issued by a federal judge or state court judge. A school official should act in accordance with district policy when presented with a federal or state court warrant. An administrative subpoena is a request for the production of documents or other evidence and is issued by an immigration officer. School districts do not need to immediately comply with an ICE administrative subpoena. If an immigration officer arrives with such a subpoena, the school district may decline to produce the information sought and may choose to challenge the administrative subpoena before a judge. The SCOTUS case, Plyer v. Doe, remains the law of the land, and public schools cannot deny undocumented students access to public education. To protect Wald Lake school students, I urge this board to adopt a Safe Zone Resolution ASAP. Thank you."
Thank you. So we're going to move on to administrative commentary. Dr. Lanz.
Mrs. Omer, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Dr. Lanz. Just trying to wrap up a couple of different things in terms of highlighting that the payroll department, obviously, as you know, our fiscal year-end is June 30th, but we still have a calendar to deal with, and trying to get out W-2s for all of our employees. So they've gotten those, obviously, on a timely basis, as required, but still, we're 1,800 W-2s for all of our wonderful employees here at Wald Lake. In terms of people counting, obviously, we honored two of our team members tonight, which we appreciate, but they're also working hard on kindergarten JK registration, which we moved up a little bit to accommodate families in schools of choice, and then they're also heading into the supplemental count, which will take place on February 12th. We're working on our enrollment projections. We have some information to plant and ran to provide us some additional information to help us as we move forward. And then also, obviously, the governor released their initial thoughts on the budget for the coming '25, '26 school year. Certainly, there's a lot of moving parts on that, and there's a long way to go, since we'll need to hear from the other parts of the legislature and what their thoughts are as well. But we'll certainly keep an eye on that and try to monitor the impact that that has on our operational budget, since that's where the majority of our funding comes for our educational component. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Mear.
Thank you, Dr. Lanz. Special Services leadership, in conjunction with our middle school principals, are working to develop a middle school offering this year for our unified sports program. So we're hoping to launch an offering for middle school unified basketball in a clinic model for this late winter and spring, and so there will be more information forthcoming and opportunities for parents to sign students up. So we're excited about that expansion from the two-year unified sports program that's been happening at high school.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Klansky.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Lanz. Kind of alongside with what Mrs. Omer shared, we had our kindergarten information night, which was really well-attended. I know there was a little bit of confusion based on the fact that there was a snow day that day, but we wanted to keep that date as advertised, and our families, thank goodness the roads cleared by the time the afternoon rolled around and evening rolled around, and our principals, and thanks to our kindergarten and junior kindergarten staff who showed up that evening to really help facilitate those information nights. So, yes, it's been, it's been really successful. I'm excited and thankful to Mrs. Omer and her team and the student services team for really working hard to combine not just one enrollment opportunity with kindergarten, but to combine that with JK, as well as combine that with our school of choice window. So, we're monitoring those numbers closely for families that are out there wondering about when they'll be able to find out if their summer birthday student, who's currently on a waitlist for JK, can get a spot. We're anticipating that after we get through some of those school of choice opportunities for families to sign on with us, that we can start to see how those numbers shake out. So we anticipate by springtime, we should, by early springtime, we should be able to let families know about that. But really, really great opportunities. We're also monitoring the growth over the last couple of years of our junior kindergarten students who had that initial opportunity when we launched. Just word on the street, without numbers in front of me, that those students are really thriving with that extra year. So we're glad to be able to offer that to our families and to our students. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Durkin.
Thank you, Dr. Lanz. And we already heard some of it earlier, but I wanted to take this opportunity to say, break all the legs to the cast and crew of Joseph this weekend. There are great seats available for the next three shows. I know they're off, off and running right now, they might even be intermission at this point, but Ashley Ward, Jared Schneider, our own Matt Weber, amazing adults involved, amazing kids involved, so we hope to see the community come out and support these amazing kids.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Scaling.
Thank you, Dr. Lanz. I was able to attend the fentanyl fathers' presentations that the high schools hosted a few weeks ago, as well as the community presentation. It was a great information that brought forward the important information about the fentanyl poisoning that is impacting our unsuspecting youth. We were also, as I said, we were able to hold the presentation for the community members, and they too also were able to learn the tools to recognize, avoid, and actively address the public health issue. I really want to thank Mr. Medier, Mr. Diamond, and Mrs. Pashek, the principals there, for facilitating that for our students, as well as Mr. Medier partnering with Words of Hope for Life Organization to bring that community presentation forward as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scaling. Thank you, Mr. Scaly. Yes, Ms. Klansky.
I'm so sorry, Dr. Lons.
Yes, we'll bring it back to you.
And I should have brought, thank you, I should have brought notes with my, I thought I had it all up here, but not until Mr. Durkin mentioned Mrs. Ward's work on the performance at Northern. I had an opportunity just a few weeks ago to head out to the Michigan Music Conference for a Friday in Grand Rapids. We had 12 of our students at the high school level being honored as All-State with their music performance. So I'm, I'm a, I'm a fine arts music mom. My daughter's a band student at, at our local high school. So I know that near and dear and what it really takes in terms of the work and dedication for our students to make it to the, to the state level and to compete and perform at that level. Also, Mrs. Ward and the Bel Canto Group, the choral singing group at Northern, were one of four secondary schools selected to perform. I got a chance to sit and hear all the performances. All four schools from around the state did amazing, but boy, did our Northern singers really come through. It was a phenomenal performance and really great. They received rave reviews from not only the crowd, those sitting around us, and it was a really great opportunity to hear and celebrate those kids. So, thanks, sorry, forgot about that.
No, thank you. Today I'm going to talk about what some of our community members talked about, which was our NISH rating, which is, in one way that we're rated, which puts us at 68 out of 557 schools in the state of Michigan. Now, some of our community members might draw a straight line between our ranking and the success of our, of our district. Before we draw that line, I'd like to bring some attention to how this ranking is developed and give some examples along the way. First of all, it's important to note this company is a for-profit company and that obviously rating any large organism is a difficult process. And I appreciate the NISH actually spells out very clearly from, from my perspective how they do rate districts. And I think it's, I'll say I'm not an expert on how they rate districts, but I'm sure before anyone makes any claim of whether being ranked number one or being ranked 68 or being ranked 557, they did a couple clicks themselves to find out how this actually is ranked. For our community that may not have done that, let me share with you some examples and the process that they use. They have seven factors that they consider: academic grades, teacher grades, cultural and diversity grade, student-parent surveys on overall experience, resource facilities grade, club activities grade, and sports grade. Each one of these categories has a different weight. For example, academic grades is 50% of the total weighting for the ranking, where parent and student surveys on overall experiences is 12.5%. So of the total ranking, 100%, and I'm going to dig into some of these just to give you a couple of examples, obviously you can go to their website and you can dig deeper if you'd like to. 12.5% of how they rank is just based on surveys that people turn in based on a sweepstake that they offer. So it's important to know that that's 12% to start with. But let's just go ahead and let's dig in just a little bit on academic grades because that's important to me. It's important to everyone in this room and it's probably important to everyone that's listening to us. So 33% of it is based on state proficiency, and that's from the U.S. Department of Education. And there's a number of other factors that they use in that 33%, but that's a fair assessment. I don't have a problem with anyone using proficiency data as a part of a measurement. I think that's a fair starting point. Then they look at top college scores. Okay, if we want to say that all of our kids going to college is important, then that might be something very reasonable to look at. However, the way that they get that 17.3% is by parents self-reporting what their child did. So that's statistical data that is only as valid as what people report themselves. Not that people would report good or bad data, it's just the data that they're looking at. We then go down to graduation rate again. I think it's a very important data point to look at. And then we go to parent-student surveys on academics. That is how parents and students self-report their academic experience here in Wald Lake. And that's 12% of the overall factors when it comes to determining the academic grades and methodology. Then student-to-teacher ratio, AP enrollment, and AP pass test rate. That's at 100% of that category that makes up 50% of the overall rating. So in that subcategory, almost 30% of that is survey data that is self-reported. Now, I would submit that that's not necessarily the most reliable survey data that we can have. Is it important to have? Absolutely. As all of you know, we survey you. We survey everyone at the end of the year. At the beginning of this year, we surveyed everyone related to our strategic plan. It certainly is very important, but it's equally important to know how these numbers come about. And we could go down to the second one, which is best teacher methodology, 25% of that is survey data. How diverse your school is, 25% of that is survey data, and et cetera. To the point of which, one of the categories, which is parent overall survey, again being 12%, that's all it is, is just survey data. There's no other data point that would be what I would consider more quantitative in nature, where surveys typically are qualitative in nature or quantitative based off of the qualitative information offered in that survey. So I know that rankings are important and I believe that rankings on any particular system is something for us to pay attention to. An example of a ranking that NISH has is Oakland Schools is ranked fourth in the state. Now I find that interesting for a couple of reasons. One, Oakland Schools is a service provider of which the only students that they could claim are students that's in their virtual program, which are our students and all 28 county school districts that have their students go to that program. As a matter of fact, one of the people that filled out a review on Oakland Schools said, "I've enjoyed playing ladies soccer for four years and the Friday night football games." I also find that interesting because Oakland Schools has no athletic program, has no extracurricular program, has no program at all for students other than what they support through OTAC or through early college, et cetera. But there's nothing that would relate to that. So I say all that to say this: no ranking system is perfect. No ranking system is going to paint one picture. So as we look at success, I think there's some other indicators that we could look at at our district, maybe every district we want to look at this. One thing we could look at is, are there developments being built in districts? Absolutely, in our district, we have developments being built every year. As a matter of fact, we're very close to being built out as a school district when it comes to new homes. How, how long does a home stay on the market in a district? Our average for last year was 20 days on the market. That says that people want to buy homes in our district. Are housing prices increasing or decreasing? They've increased by 4% on average. Obviously, we're 66 square miles, so that's an average of a number of different municipalities. Some would be higher, some might be lower. For specifically to our district, how have our student, excuse me, how have our school of choice applications been? Over the last 10 years, they've been relatively consistent. Those are people choosing to come to our district to leave their district. So let's talk about proficiency rates because, again, I believe that proficiency rates are incredibly important. Right now, our, and this is based on our M-Step data, our third grade through seventh grade aggregate for ELA is 54%. Our third grade through seventh grade for math is 52%. That's unacceptable. You've heard me say that from the beginning. I've, I'm, I can't speak to every other superintendent, but I've tied my goal to our literacy improvement. I've made that public. I've made it a very difficult goal for us to achieve. And so that's something that I am basing my evaluation on, is increasing our proficiency. So that's not something I shy away from. That being said, it's also important to know what we benchmark that to because hearing 54% for, for us in literacy, okay, that doesn't sound fantastic, and it's not, but it's higher than the county average and it's significantly higher than the state average. So looking at numbers in absence of other numbers doesn't give you the relevant point of view of what we need to see when we're painting the whole picture of what we want our district to be. So with all this in mind, I caution anyone from overrelying on any one source like NISH or like the U.S. News and World Report or College Board. All of those organizations, again, paint part of a picture. We need to look at our whole picture. And with that in mind, if we were ranked number one in any one of those areas, I would not be talking about it because I do not believe that that is a valuable way to identify what is good and what is happening in our district. What do I believe that is? Well, I stand by our staff. I stand by our staff who every day looks to support, challenge, and find creative ways to improve our, our students' learning, your children. I stand by our parents who overwhelmingly support our schools. And no, I never take that for granted. I stand by the curriculum work that we're doing, the revisions that we continually make. Mrs. Klansky and her team are doing a fantastic job. As a matter of fact, in December, they did a critical analysis of how we did on our M-Step and talked about different areas that we'll be looking to improve upon this year and continuing in areas that we're looking to improve upon. And finally, I stand by our board members who supported, again, making literacy improvements one of my goals and for the continued request of academic data for me to provide to them. We do have to make improvements. That's fine. But drawing a straight line from any one data source is just too simple, it's just too easy, and it doesn't accurately represent the complicated process that it would be to truly rank 157, I'm sorry, 557 schools in the state of Michigan. I look forward to what we as the Wald Lake family will accomplish in the future. I look forward to continuing to work with our board to make sure that increasing proficiency continues to be our priority. Ms. Kaplan.
Thank you. We're going to move on to board commentary. Mrs. Levin.
Thank you, Mrs. Kaplan. So there we are then. You know, one speaker said it best, teachers should be teaching board-approved curriculum. And, you know, what I'm disappointed about is that it seems like our board has fallen back into a pattern of not really having meaningful discussions about really anything. You know, I requested that we have a board workshop to talk about priorities. I requested an agenda item to talk about priorities. I was told that that's not a priority. So, you know, I'm glad, if anything, that we're all talking about it. Left, right, red, blue, everybody in this room seems to have some opinion about things that I said on social media. And so for that, I'm grateful. And I'm, I'm glad that Dr. Lons has taken the time to respond in the way that he has. And I'm, I know that proficiency is, is important. What I think the board needs to address is priorities. It's are we aligning our spending with the priorities? We say we want to support our teachers. Are we doing that through our budgeting? Are we doing that through paying, you know, paras more so that they have the support, so that we have enough of them? Are we supporting our special needs students? I hear left and right about, you know, special needs not being addressed and, you know, what are the priorities? Goals are good, but what are the priorities? And so I'm glad that this has, has raised concerns and discussion because that means that we've found something that we can all agree on and I think that's how we start moving things forward. So, thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. Sorry I couldn't attend the MLK Day celebration. I saw that it was a very well-attended, amazing event, as always. Just a little heads up or statement is I did complete my MASBCBA 101, which is Fundamentals of School Board Service, as well as the Superintendent Valuation and Rate of Reliability Training. So I'm up to date on my training. Did that. I always look for wonderful offerings to grow and learn as a board member and I will also be participating in the consultant's interview next week as well to shed some of my, my experience on that. Got to watch the Amazing Spikers Girl volleyball this week at CHS and even got to keep score for my daughter's team. So I'm truly amazed at all the skill and competition we have in the district. It's amazing to see all the girls and how sixth, seventh, and eighth graders coming together and really expanding that. My daughter loves it. So I also want to thank Patty, our new Dublin principal, for holding a coffee meet and greet with the community event last week. I believe we had about 20 families, or parents that were there. I think it was great to meet with her and with the fellow parents and I think she has some great ideas to move us forward. With that as well, I want to really acknowledge the amazing unsung heroes at Dublin Elementary, the amazing teachers and staff, especially the front office, that were the constant and professional and adaptable through our principal rotation this year, as maybe some of the district did not know. But we had, believe, three interims before we got to Patty. And so I can imagine how incredibly stressful that situation is and I applaud them and I'm, as a proud parent of a Dublin student and as a board member, I wanted to publicly thank them for their outstanding work because from my side, as a parent, it was seamless, but I know, to me, it further cemented their strength in showing the dedication of the district and our community. And they truly are the backbone and lifeblood of our district and I'm thankful for them. Also, I wanted to say that I know there are students, educators, and families that are having many emotions about what is happening in the world. I understand, again, that not everyone has the same beliefs, backgrounds, or path in life, and that's okay. But, you know, don't disagree without being disagreeable. Showing kindness and empathy are paramount to traverse through life and I hope that we maintain that decorum. All I can say is that personally, I will always be a voice for everyone in this district as I was elected to be. Finally, I'm looking forward to seeing Joseph this weekend with my family at Northern. And I really want to say to all the students and staff, enjoy your spirit weeks next week and continue learning during Black History Month. Thank you.
Mrs. West.
Just wanted to let you know that I finally finished my CBA reading as well, so we're all caught up there, but that's all I have for today. Thank you.
Mrs. Fernandez.
So I thought I would share a couple of items. I was in early tonight, actually, to review the world language books. I am proficient enough to review at least two of the three languages, so thank you for granting me that opportunity. And it was, it's exciting to see how the materials have changed over the years. Maybe a lot more how you communicate by texty-texty stuff than we ever had in our day. And you wouldn't be surprised if the French overemphasizes ESG and a lot of greeny-greeny stuff, but, you know, I think the books, I'm sure, will be welcome edition and we'll be talking about them next month. I will do another consultant interview here this coming week. I was able to participate the first time around and, of course, every time we're given a chance to participate, I'm happy to do so. So I look forward to that and I will get my chance tomorrow with my son, who was, who participated heavily, both of my sons, in the musicals, to see the Joseph in the amazing Technicolor green coat. So he comes back every year, every season for those and, and I'll be watching it tomorrow with him. Thanks.
Mr. Siegler.
You know, we're really blessed by the diversity of our society and the diversity within this community. And I took great pleasure at the Martin Luther King Day celebration of presenting a, an award to a young child from Pleasant Lake and reading what she had, reading what she wrote for the presentation. And just the look in her eyes and the smile on her face as she was accepting the award gave me this warm, fuzzy feeling, not only as a parent, but as a grandparent and as a board member. And it really, you know, you need things every once in a while to help inspire you and look towards the future. That was it. I'd like to thank Mrs. Glasser, PTAs, for the presentation at the Holocaust Center. I was unable to make it, but I did understand that there was great feedback and good participation. And I know that took a lot of work to get everybody there and to get the community involved. As we listen to what's happening in Washington right now, I, my recommendation is we take everything with a grain of salt until we see what is actually going to be enacted, what is going to become law, what we are going to be faced with, the challenges that we as a community, as a district, as a society will be facing, and what changes we'll be forbearing and have an impact on us. I would like to thank Mrs. Omer for the detailed information regarding the budget, budget changes. I know that we will be reviewing that, but thank you for making it very simple and putting it in simplified terms of what we're looking at, the changes we're facing, and how we have to go about doing that. I do have the consultant interview next week also and look forward to that. And I am looking forward to Joseph as a former band and orchestra booster and having our children all, both participate in different activities. I cannot wait for this event and see it Saturday night. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I debated whether I was going to do this or not, but I'm going to do this. I don't usually say the things that I'm going to say, so everyone bear with me. I don't know if most of you know some of my past, but I had a major loss two years ago. I'm coming up on an anniversary on Sunday. And with that perspective, I want to say to all of our community, to everyone here, you never know what tomorrow brings. Nobody knows what's going to happen. Obviously, I did not. We are a community. We are supposed to be with our friends, our families, our coworkers, however that may be. But if we are approaching things in a negative way and we are not positive, that may how you, be how you go out. That is not what any of us want. That is not how we want things to be left. We want to be left with a positive feeling and for all of our community to be together. So the negativity, the anger, we all need to think about that before we speak, before we put something on social media, before we say something to somebody else, because you have no idea as individuals what that other person you have no idea as individuals what that other person may be thinking or feeling at the time. And your words, they may hurt, they may be irreplicable, you all know what I'm saying. And that is something that we all need to think about as individuals. And I'm not just saying that here in Wald Lake and in our community. I'm saying that in our country, I'm saying that in our world. Tomorrow is not promised. Make sure you live positively. Use positivity, not negativity, to live the rest of your lives and try to make an impact on everyone around you in a positive, not negative, way. Positivity is what's going to get you heard, not negativity. Thank you.
Madam President, if I, I have a request on the bat phone from Mr. Weber. We're apparently having a little bit of technical difficulties, so if we could pause and for one and a half minutes, so he can reboot the system.
Okay, we are going to take a recess. I'll give him five till 8:15. So we are recessed till 8:15.
I'll wait for Mrs. Kohansky. Sorry. Okay, we're going to move on with the consent agenda, which include the approval of minutes from January 9th, our special meeting, and January 9th, our regular meeting, our personnel recommendations, our finance reports, disbursements in the amount of $15,356,756, balance sheet and statement of revenues on audit and invest it schedule, and our Head Start Director's report. Mr. Siegler.
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Consent agenda passes six to zero. Now we'll move on to administrative appointment. Boy, I cannot speak tonight. Administrative appointment. Dr. Lons.
Thank you very much. Playing the role of Mr. Hamka is Mr. Scaling tonight. Mr. Hamka is actually in Mount Pleasant attending a negotiator's conference to get ready for upcoming negotiations. Mr. Scaling.
I'll do my best.
Confidence in you, sir. No pressure.
Well, I know. The suit's already. On behalf of Mr. Hamka, I am pleased to recommend the appointment of Dr. Gary Pule as Supervisor of Special Services. Dr. Pule is a dedicated educator with extensive experience in birth-through-post secondary education, holding a bachelor's degree in elementary special education from the University of Michigan, a master's degree in educational leadership, special education, administration from Grand Valley State, and a doctoral degree in educational leadership from Central Michigan University.
Fire up chips.
Gary brings a wealth of knowledge and expertise to education. With a passion for fostering inclusive learning environments, Gary focuses on empowering educators to cater to diverse learning needs. Gary is dedicated to nurturing the potential of every educator to empower students, ensure they have the tools, resources, and encouragement to thrive in their academic and personal lives. Pending board approval, Dr. Pule is scheduled to begin working in Wald Lake on March 3rd.
Mr. Smith.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Dr. Gary Pule III as a Supervisor of Special Services and that this appointment be made consistent with the provisions of the Wald Lake School Administrators Association Master Agreement.
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six, zero. Moving on to next item, Authorization Agreement for School Resource Officers. Dr. Lons.
Thank you, Madam President. Commerce Township has been providing our school resource officers to the district throughout, through, excuse me, the Oakland County Sheriff's Office and the Commerce Township Substation for a number of years. The administration recommends continuing this relationship and entering into a three-year agreement for services beginning with the 2025 school year. On a personal note, I, Mr. Gary, I appreciate you being here. We have a very good working relationship. We appreciate the support. The contract that we're entering into allows for not only Township, but for us. If there's a challenge with that contract, that we have a 30-day, I believe, exit opportunity. So it does, even though it's a three-year contract, that's for more budgeting purposes. If we need to exit that contract, we still have the ability to do that if necessary.
Ms. Kaplan.
Mr. Siegler.
I move that the Board of Education approve a three-year agreement with the charter Township of Commerce to provide school resource officers to the district through the Oakland County Sheriff's Office, Commerce Substation, and authorize the Superintendent of Schools to execute the contract.
Discussion. Mrs. Levin.
I just want to take this opportunity to thank the Oakland County Sheriff Department, our school resource officers, and everyone who backs the blue. These are the most important people in our schools when it comes to protecting our children. And although I'd always love to see more people protecting our children, these guys work tirelessly. They don't just work school hours. They're at basketball games, and they're at other details, football games. I mean, they're everywhere, and we can't thank them enough. So, thank you. And, you know, although this contract is not cheap, I believe it's almost a 50% increase. At least the Board of Commissioners is getting paid more, so there's that.
Anybody else? Yeah, Mrs. Fernandez.
I had a question, and thank you very much for appearing here and sharing with us the 15% increase from the county as a portion of that bit. I thought I understood you to say, then, that the COLA or the increase year-to-year was 6%, and is that what I understand?
Well, it is a formula of the consumer price index plus, so.
Plus 6%. That seems like a hearty increase, so congratulations, guys, because a CPI plus 6 is a lot more than probably many of us are seeing in our annual bonus amounts, but thank you for the details.
Madam President.
Dr. Lons.
And thank you for bringing that up. I just want to be very clear that Commerce Township is not profiting any additional funds off of this. This is, they're in essence a flow-through agency, and I mean no disrespect with that. And if you have heard our sheriff comment, the sheriff was not interested in these raises. It was the Board of Commissioners that chose to do that, all on their own, without any recommendation, at least that's been made public, from any of the officers or anyone in that Oakland County Sheriff's Department. So just want to be clear that the Township is still a great partner and is not looking to make any money off of this, other than what is appropriate for our partnership.
Thank you. Whoever tacked that on, though, congratulations.
Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six, zero. Moving on to resolution 2024-25 Budget Amendments. Dr. Lons.
Mrs. Omar.
I hope that, I know that there is a lot of changes, since if you remember in June when we were talking about the budget, certainly what we initially proposed in the budget certainly changed dramatically. And so what we presented for the board resolutions for the School Service Fund and for the General Fund Budget, hopefully the board bulletin provided some additional information on those big swings and why they took place, so to help you kind of understand those types of things. So in that particular light, then, we have evaluated the budgets, the items and adjustments have been made to reflect the 24-25 revenues and expenditures to more accurately reflect the reality of what we know currently. So administration recommends that the 24-25 Budget Amendment Resolutions for the General Fund and School Service Fund be adopted as presented.
Mrs. Levin.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolutions to amend the 24-25 budgets as presented.
Support.
Discussion. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six, zero. Moving on to resolution, Board Review of the Head Start Program. Dr. Lons.
Back to you, Mrs. Quansey.
Thank you, Dr. Lons. In accordance with the federal Head Start Performance Standards, the Wald Lake Consolidated School District Board of Education is the governing body of the district's Head Start program. And in order to comply with all federal contract regulations, Wald Lake Schools Head Start is requesting that the board review the items that were listed below. They were part of your board packet, requesting the board's approval of the governing body conflict of interest and personnel policy for the 24-25 school year. All items were approved by the Head Start Policy Committee, and the school board has for your review the Policy Council Minutes, Standards of Conduct, and Grievance Procedure. School board requests for approval of the Personnel Policy and Governing Body Conflict of Interest.
Mrs. Levin.
I move that the Board of Education approve the 24-25 Head Start Governing Body Conflict of Interest and Personnel Policy for the 24-25 school year as presented.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, six, zero. Didn't hear from all of you, I don't think. I only heard from a few of you, I'm like.
We'll try it again.
We'll try it one more time. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six, zero. Thank you.
I'm looking wrong. What's wrong here?
Okay, we're moving on to Resolution of MASB Board of Directors Election in Regions Six, Seven, and Eight. I'm going to hand this over to Mr. Siegler. He didn't know that was happening, but I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Siegler, since he knows. Good guess.
Thank you. So we have the opportunity to vote for three regions for the MASB. Very good candidates throughout. I have had some, I've had the opportunity, as I believe all of us did, to review the candidate information. And based on that, for Region Six, I would like to recommend Elizabeth Odell out of St. Joseph County ISD, Master Board certified. She has a very extensive background in mental health, and she is also a former teacher. For Region Seven, Guillermo Lopez, 24 years on his local school board. He's a Master Board Member. He's been on the Board of Directors for several years. Very strong advocate in Lansing and in Washington, a very vocal speaker. And for Region Eight, while we do have two individuals from Oakland County running, we currently have four members from Oakland County already on the MASB Board of Directors. We also have representation from Macomb County, but we have nobody from Wayne Risa or the Wayne County Community Schools. And also having worked with this individual, I would like to nominate Roderick Means, 28 years on his local school board, Master Platinum. He's been very active in government relations, bylaws, board leadership, and training.
Okay, I need a motion. And if you want to insert those names, then we can discuss it.
Madam President, I move the Wald Lake Consolidated School District Board of Education choose the following candidates to be MASB Board of Directors. For Region Six, as I said, Elizabeth Odell. For Region Seven, Guillermo Lopez. And for Region Eight, Roderick Means.
Support. Okay, discussion. Go ahead, Mrs. Levin.
Mr. Siegler, this is a role you have, right?
This is, I am on the board, correct.
Okay. And what exactly do you do?
Well, basically, we're reviewing policy. One thing I, you know, let me state this, first of all. One thing that board has taught me how to do is look at things globally within the state. Where we in Oakland County or Wald Lake, Rochester districts like that, we, this has given me a purview of everything that goes on within the state. We are doing lobbying for what is in the greater good as a consensus for all of us within the state. We are working on training of school board members, offering classes, looking at insightful training. We are reviewing the budget. What I see here from a budget perspective for the district is much different than what you have to see from the state. Sitting on that board has taught me how to really look at things from a global perspective. The issues that we have here, you know, you're talking 12,000 students. You're talking, you know, 20 buildings, and then you go and you look at other districts where you have 900 students and one building. We're talking about doing, you know, we talk about things, transportation and buses and how many miles we drive, and then somebody looks at me and goes, yes, we have adequate spacing in our parking lot for X amount of snowmobiles, and the average time it takes a student to get to our school is X in the middle of winter. So we look, from the MASB board, I'm looking at things from a very global perspective for the state, and it allows me to really get a better understanding. When we have issues that we have conflicts on, it also allows me to look at things and understand their points of view, because we don't always agree on everything that comes before us as an MASB board or that we have to go to Lansing for. So we have to go for what is in the greater good of the state and work as a collaborative team, as we do on this board, to move forward, make sure we have funding, make sure we have the proper things in place. I mean, one of the things that I take great pride in as, from sitting on that board, as well as sitting on this board, is for years, we try, you know, we had the breakfast program, and then we had to, we wanted to expand it to the lunch program. A lot of issues in that. And then when we were in, when I was in Washington several years ago with, representing both MASB and Oakland County and Wald Lake Schools, we had a meeting with our representatives, and we had our priorities, and we were talking about the, you know, the lunch and breakfast programs. And I was talking to Representative Johnson, Representative James, and, you know, he's talking about the program, and we're talking about the breakfast and lunch program, and he says, oh, he's supportive. And I was talking, Representative McLean came in. We support it. And I'm, and then, you know, the Democratic contingent came in. We support it. And I looked at them, and I said, have any of you sat down together to discuss this, to see how we can move this forward to the governor's desk and actually make this work? No. And we were able to arrange a meeting with everybody, and granted, you know, it's not law right now, but we, you know, it's still categorical, if you will, and I'd love to see it written into the budget as part of the law. We were able to get that accomplished. You talk about things like IDEA funding. IDEA funding reimbursement to our district should be 40%. The highest I believe we have seen it during my tenure on any board is 18%. We're still struggling to get that funding that is owed to us, that we're taking out of our general fund, back. So it's a lot of lobbying sometimes. It's a lot of trips to Lansing to meet with our representatives. You know, I found in my travels that a personal visit is much better than a phone call, meeting these, meeting our individuals in Lansing face-to-face. So we do that, and it's, you know, we're not getting compensated for that. That's in addition to what I'm doing on this board, what I'm doing within Oakland County, trying to make a difference and make sure that we, as a greater good, can still achieve for our children.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Fernandez.
Thank you. I would have an alternative suggestion for Region Eight in Paul Colen, and I think that something that strikes me a lot about Paul is he is perhaps the most involved person I've ever seen across not only his board, but students, teachers, and parents, just universally everywhere. The man is everywhere, and I think that that gives him a really good perspective on, you know, the needs and things that should be represented in, at this level. So I don't, you know, I think it's possible to amend the motion with a name, and then you deal with the amendment first.
Well, I think, no, I think we vote on the first motion that came through first, and then we amend it.
Okay. And maybe we can take that up separately, just to clarify that, because I think there's, we should probably all be clear about that at some point in time. But it's fine. I'm just saying, I have an alternate opinion.
Okay.
And I understand we're going to have one person put forward three names, and we're just going to vote on it, so I, but that would be my recommendation strongly.
Okay. Mr. Siegler.
And that's why I stated, you know, we currently have four members from Oakland County on the Oakland, or on the Michigan Association of School Boards. And in order for us to have, in my opinion, true representation, we need, we have nobody from Wayne or Detroit right now, and we have had.
And I understand we're going to have one person put forward three names, and we're just going to vote on it. So I, but that would be my recommendation strongly.
Okay. Mr. Siegler.
And that's why I stated, you know, we currently have four members from Oakland County on the Oakland, or on the Michigan Association of School Boards. And in order for us to have, in my opinion, true representation, we need, we have nobody from Wayne or Detroit right now, and we have had individuals there before. So I would, as much as I would love to have somebody else from Oakland County, I think we would start monopolizing the state board.
I'm not sure we made that a consideration when we put our own selves forward for that board. So I understand what you're saying. Thank you for that information.
Okay. Yep, yeah, Mrs. Levin.
I think that, you know, if we're talking about, you know, a global perspective, I think it doesn't necessarily need to be geographical. You know, if we don't want to have a monopoly on the board, perhaps we don't want to have all progressive people on the board. Paul is a more conservative voice, and I think that that's not a bad thing to have on that board. Doesn't matter where he lives. I think it matters how he approaches things. He is curious, not furious, and I think he has a great way of asking questions and finding answers. I don't care where he lives. I care what he brings to the table.
Any other discussion? Mr. Smith.
Just random, so this is just our, our votes?
Correct.
So...
It's just, this is just the votes from Wild Lake. Every school has the same votes. These are just ours. Yes.
Okay, just for clarification out there that...
Um... Well, we have to, yeah, we have to, let's, we'll vote for this motion, and then we can amend and fix where we need to. Okay? So the motion that's on the table is...
Hold on one second. I just want to, I don't think that that's the correct process. If the amendment is related to the current, I believe that if Mrs. Fernandez's amendment is seconded, that it can be brought before the board as a vote, that you don't have to vote on the main motion first if it, unless it's not related or it's not germane to the, to the motion on the table. So I think it's correct that, provided it's seconded, you guys should be able to...
Yeah, but what it says there also is if it's considered a new motion, which means it's a substantive change of the original motion, then you have to deal with the first motion first.
I...
So like...
It's a specific person, so it is substantive.
Since you're changing specific names, it's a difference between an amendment and a motion. This is, so technically, Mrs. Kaplan, you need to rule on whether you believe this is an amendment or whether you believe it is a motion.
From, you're talking about from Mrs. Fernandez.
And to be considered an amendment, it cannot be substantive and change. A substantive change is considered a new motion.
Yeah, I believe it's substantive and change. It's a person's name that we're changing, so we do have to...
It would be non-substantive, so I would like to amend this to vote one by one. I mean, can we...
That's, yes, yes, that would be, that would be an amendment that we can do.
Talk about the support. How about that?
Okay, so, so we're all clear. So we're going to go with what Mrs. Fernandez just said, and we're going to vote on each individual rather than as a whole. Okay? And we got support from Mrs. Levin. So, Mr. Smith.
Just for clarification, Madam President, if, are we able to, will it negate our vote if we only say, come to a conclusion on two?
No.
And we have a vote of no, or blank, or I'm just curious, just for clarification. Okay, thank you.
I think a vote is a vote, and if it's a no vote, then it's, you know, it's, if it's a tie, it's just, that's the way it goes to the, to the state. Okay, so we're going to adjust the motion.
Mm-hmm, amend the motion.
Or amend the motion.
It was seconded.
Do you want to read the amendment motion, Mrs. Fernandez, or do you want, Mr. Siego?
I'm still stunned by how we're defining what is a substantive change to the motion. But what you're telling me right now is the amendment was the...
Turn your mic on. They said they can't hear you. There you go.
The suggested, that I cannot suggest a difference name because you're telling me that is too substantive.
But you, you can put in the motion that we're going to vote, you know, we're putting in, just go to region six, if you say, you know, Elizabeth Odell. And then when you get to region eight, you can put in the two names that were...
How do you vote on it?
Oh, yeah.
No, you need to vote on region six.
Region six.
The last thing you said was vote on each region at a time.
I'm sorry. Region six, then region seven, and then, you know, region eight.
Let's be honest about whether this is going to make any difference or not. So if you're telling me the only non-substantive amendment I can make is to say, I would like to amend this motion in order to vote separately for region six, region seven, and region eight.
Correct. And Mrs. Levin supported you.
And you support that? And you, and you agree that that's an amendment, not a motion?
Yes. Yes, I do agree that that's an amendment. Yes.
Does that restate the...
Yes. 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 Go ahead, Mr. Siegler. I've said a lot of yeses.
Okay. I move the Wild Lake Consolidated School Board, School District Board of Education choose the following candidate for region six, Elizabeth Odell.
Okay, discussion on that. Okay, then let's vote on that one. All those in favor of Elizabeth, Elizabeth Odell?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six to zero.
I move that the Wild Lake Consolidated School District Board of Education choose the following candidate from region seven, Guillermo Lopez.
Discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six to zero.
I move that the Wild Lake Consolidated School District Board of Education nominate the following candidate for region eight, Roderick Means.
Okay, can have the discussion here, and then we'll have the vote. Any other further discussion? No? Okay, then let's vote. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. West, did you have something?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, then let's vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion does not carry. Three, three.
I move that the Wild Lake Consolidated School District Board of Education choose the following candidate to be on the MASB Board of Directors for region eight, Paul Colan.
Discussion. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Or nay?
Nay.
So, again, does not pass. Three, three.
Okay.
Okay, we're moving on to board policy administrative regulations update.
Thank you, Madam President. Just making the board aware that we are adjusting our 2001 AR student fees related specifically to our preschool programs to keep us aligned with the preschool programs surrounding our district, not only private, but also other public school preschool programs. And then obviously amending the 4,000 AR to reflect the hiring that we just, that you all affirmed. So thank you for that. Madam President.
Thank you. With that, we are going to adjourn at 8:40, and I'll give it to forty...
One.
Have a good night, and everyone be careful in the weather.
Thanks, everyone.
[inaudible]